...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with one justice for all.
I have a rule call of members.
Mayor Moore, here. Trustee Kim Trombley, here. Trustee Martin, here. Trustee Southwick, here. Trustee Garrett, here.
Okay, we now submit the minutes of the last meeting for approval. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes?
So long.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, all in favor of approving the minutes of previous meetings say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye sever. At this time, we will have a presentation of petitions, communications, notices, and general question period for members of the community. I just want to remind everybody that you should state your name and place of residence before speaking. We limit your talk for five minutes. We also would like to welcome Celine Pocat, our county legislator here today. I'm sure she'll have something to say for us in a few minutes. Okay, is there any public comment?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, my name is Jeff Martin. I am a resident Cedar Street. I'm a recent resident of Champlain. I moved here about seven months ago. The reason I'm here today is to discuss with you about the situation we have with the local park of the flood zone. I know by the looks that you guys have heard this before. The thing is, every night, every night, we have fights there. The police are called, they hardly respond now. It's not a safe area for my child. It's not a good area for a residential area to have a bar. I've tried to communicate with the owner of the flood zone, his attitude is, you know, there's nothing that's going to happen that's going to move him out of there. People leave that place visibly intoxicated, even in the afternoons, not only at night. There's been rumors that people are being served underage, and I know that's speculation, but still, it's got, there can be many people in the community concerned. Beer cans are being thrown in their yards, fights are coming up the streets, and Friday night, you can pretty much guarantee there's going to be a knockdown, drag-out fight in the parking lot every Friday night. The music is so loud, it shakes our windows and nothing stops. The police, they respond either not at all or late when we call the state police. And I'm here today to see if something can be done about getting a dangerous place out of our community, and it is a dangerous place.
Okay, thank you. We'll look into that. Actually, the second person who's mentioned that area to us, and we'll look into what we can do through the village attorney. Thank you for your comment. Is there any other comments?
Okay, I'm going to point the camera here. I'm Ken DellaFrenz, and I normally run the camera, which is why I'm sitting here on Cedar Street. And I have similar concerns in terms of the bar. I wouldn't say that I'd like to see it eradicated. I was actually one of the trustees that helped put it there, I wanted to do the cannons in. And I don't know what may or may not have changed from when it was originally put in, but maybe it hasn't changed. But I have a recollection of those ten, back ten years as a trustee, well, former trustee rather, that said it had to be consistent with the community and community character. And back then, things were very populistic, it was quiet, people could go, have a drink, and things were pretty peaceful. For myself, I know that I've complained numerous times, probably five or 10, somewhere in that range, to the police at about 1:30 in the morning, which is just before the 2 o'clock close-down hour, the peel-out start. And that's no longer a bar issue, it's a vehicle and traffic issue, but there may be people that are inebriated driving. I have seen verbal disputes as I would pass by during the daytime hours, and that's during a time when kids could be watching and stuff like that. So I like to see things nice. I like to see the bar there, I like to see, well, Ron, I have not approached the owner. We've just had too many things to deal, I guess you could say, and came up with this meeting, and I know for one, the Boy Scouts and St. Mary's Bottle Box is getting filled because I keep the compact cans up off my yard, and glad they're not bottles, because you know, those have a greater risk of breaking. I can't say where they're coming from, but they're morning gifts, so. Anyway, that's about all I have to say, is you know, I just like to see things a little tamer, a little bit more than where they were, so at least you folks know about it. I'll get back on the camera, lost my stuff.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Jeff. Is there any further comments?
Hi, my name's Diane Ashline. I live on Oak Street. I'm here to talk about an issue that has been going on for quite some time, and it's with the village commissioner Tammy Kelsey. In July of 2003, there was a petition that was signed approximately by 12 to 13 people that was given to the village concerning her with being the commissioner and also being a coach of the team, and that it was a conflict and that she was also very unprofessional. At that time, of what we understood, there was a decision made by the village board that she would no longer coach. So the following year, she did not coach softball, okay? Two other individuals, Kim and Tammy coached, or Terry, and Tammy gave those two individuals such a hard time that Ray Perrow, who was the commissioner of Rosas Point, had to step in and have a meeting with the parents to discuss about everything, okay? Just to give you a little bit of background on how things go with her. Last year, our daughter was not on the team with Tammy. She had a wonderful year, best year ever, okay? This year, we found out our daughter was going to be underneath Tammy, so we called her. We said, please just sign a waiver, let our daughter go to Rosas Point because of the fact that we already know of the issue. We already know we're going to have problems, because I don't want my daughter under someone that's going to be like that, okay? She would not. She would totally refuse. I in turn called Linda Fredette, who knew of the issues already, and she went to Mark Elmore, who's the county commissioner. Tammy had already called Mark. According to Linda, who had called me back, she had told me that she had agreed not to coach the team, that she would not coach. And she said, is that okay with you? And I said, yes, if she doesn't coach, I'm fine with that. I in turn, she said, call her back, let her know. I in turn called her back, let her know that, and that, you know, our daughter would play in the team. She then informed me that, no, I'm coaching. So she reneged on what she had said. So I was totally confused at that point, so I called Mark Elmore back, and he couldn't understand that. He said, she did absolutely say. So I was like, well, she's saying now that she won't. So he said, okay. So he said, well, I said, then will you sign the waiver? I said, well, since you're over, which I thought at the time, he was over her. He said, it's not my place to sign the waiver. He said, because she's village. So I said, well, she told me that she would, if you told her to sign it, she would sign, that she would sign. So he said, okay, I'll call her on those two issues. He called her, and she said the reason why that she decided to coach, she decided a couple days later, she decided she was going to coach again. So she did say it, but she decided a couple days later she would. Then, he said, well, what about the waiver? And she said, oh, I didn't say it like that. So those are two things that she backed out on. So Mark then told me there was nothing he could do. He's county commissioner. He said that I had to come to the village, okay? Again. So I contacted trustee Amy Garrett, sorry I'm nervous, who contacted Mayor Jeff Moore to discuss this issue. Jeff told Amy, which Amy unfortunately didn't know who I had talked to, told Amy that I would have to call Mark Elmore. Well, when Amy told me that, I was like, I already talked to him. And he told me there was nothing that he could do, I had to come to the village. So I called Jeff myself, okay? At this point, I feel like I'm being passed around, okay? I mean, I'm trying everything I can to resolve this, you know, as low as possible, but nothing seems to be happening. I talked to Jeff, he in turn called Mark, but still, nothing's being done. Jeff, did you ask Tammy to sign the waiver? Did you talk to Tammy?
Yes, I did.
You asked Tammy to sign it, and she said no?
Right.
Okay. So right now, we are so tired of having to fight this. It's unbelievable. We have gone to so many people. You know, what we don't understand is that the village appoints Tammy as the commissioner, okay? We feel you guys should have something to say over her. I don't understand how come you don't. I don't get that. We're here to address the issue of a conflict between being the commissioner and a coach. In 2003, we addressed that, about her being unprofessional, and we had other people that signed this petition. It wasn't just us, okay? We're talking, a lot of people that signed this petition, that were on the team at the time. And now, it seems like, okay, at that time, when the mayor, she didn't coach the following year, now we have a new mayor, and now she's coaching again. Why? We'd like to know that. If you want, contact these individuals that are on the petition. Ask them what happened. One second, I'm losing my focus. Sorry, I'm going backwards here. Okay? Contact other coaches that were in other villages. I mean, it's ridiculous. You're sitting there, watching the game, and she's standing there, and she's yelling across the field, arguing with the other coaches. Contact umpires. See how they feel about how she is. Is she professional or not when she coaches? You know, we're asking you to please, don't just rely on us. Contact other people and find out exactly what's going on. Because the way we look at, we think that you will see that the village, the Champlain village commissioner or coach, does not have a very good reputation. And is this how we want the village of Champlain represented? We leave this in your hands to make the right decision for all the children of Champlain. The only thing we asked for was a waiver, or for her not to coach. We have spent three weeks on this issue, and because of this delay, the games have now started with Tammy as the coach, even though she has three other people that are willing to coach with, that are coaching with her, okay? And because of this, we've decided, because we don't want to put our daughter underneath this situation, our daughter's not going to play, and that's not fair. I mean, is that fair to make that decision, you know? But we have to. As parents, we have to make that decision, because nobody will do anything about the situation. So we're asking the village to please step in and oversee what Tammy is doing, or have a group of people over the village commissioner to ensure problems like this do not happen in the future. All we want is that the kids be treated fairly. Please step up to the plate and address the issue now, before no one wants to play in Champlain, because that is what's happening. You have no idea how many people do not want to play and are going to other places to play. Moore's is supposed to play with us, there's people that have now gone to Rosas Point to play because they don't want to play with her. We're asking you, please, please do something about this.
Okay, I just want to say, I did do a little bit of research on this, and while the board does appoint a new commissioner for the village, they do have their own policies and don't normally get involved with the policies of the county. I don't, maybe Celine could help us out on that. I'm not real, the only thing I could find out about this was that, you know, they have policies, the new commission that they follow, and that there is a hierarchy for the county. I don't know that we have direct oversee over that, but I will check into it for you.
Because according to Mark Elmore, what he told me was that we are all the town of Champlain. Rosas Point, Champlain is all considered the town of Champlain. So for county purposes, our kids can play wherever, because we're all considered the town of Champlain. It was a local decision between Tammy and Ray that the kids that live in the village play in the village that they live in. But what do you do when you have an issue like this, that you need to, you know? Someone's got to oversee her. I don't understand that. Somebody has got to be over her. Somebody's got to be able to tell her, just sign the waiver, or just, you've got to step, you know, I mean, she, you know, I always thought that if you had coaches, why would the commissioner have to step in and coach? You know, if you've got three other people that are going to coach, I don't understand that.
Okay, well, I will look into it and see.
And how long is that going to take, may I ask?
Well, I don't know as long as it takes to find out the answers like this.
Our representative in this area on the youth board is Kevin Maynor. Have you talked to Kevin?
I've talked to Kevin also. Yes, I have. I've gone to, I mean, that's the thing, I've gone to everybody, and you know, it's like being passed around. I'm seriously, I'm serious about this. It's like, everyone tells me, well, you go to this one. You know, when you get right down to it, what it is, is they all agree, and they all know what's a problem, but no one wants to hit the issue on the head. No one wants to take care of that problem. That's exactly what it boils down to. You ask to any of them, and basically, they all say, well, we do have to end up ultimately working with her, so you know, we really don't want to. So the kids suffer. The kids literally suffer. And I'm serious. Talk to the community, and I think you will find out quite a bit that there are a lot...
Okay, well, we kind of got the issue, and we know what we need to do, so, okay, thank you.
I'm Joe Ashline, with husband Diane, 83 Oak Street. And what occurs to me about, she called you, Mr. Mayor, and you pretty much told her there's nothing you can do. I mean, she's the village commissioner, and you appoint her.
The board does, yeah.
Right. And pretty much, you didn't really get involved. That's the aspect I'm getting. I mean, if you don't get involved, as a mayor, who's going to get involved? Know what I mean? I just don't understand that. I mean, stuff, rumors been going around for years that people complained about her, but no one does nothing. I mean, not a thing. Nothing is getting done. So when she called you, and you called her back saying, oh, nothing we can do, pretty much, and it was like, that it? All right? That's why we're here today. I mean, if someone could do something about it, I'd really appreciate it, because, I don't know, it's ridiculous.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Okay, are there any other comments?
I've got a question as a resident. Larry Sorel, 55, Town Hill Street, Champlain. Last week, there was an article in the paper done by Suzanne that we had to do an emergency purchase for that broom for whatever you could trackless, that you have, off of $5,200. Why was that considered an emergency purchase?
I don't believe it was.
Well, that's what the paper said, it was an emergency purchase.
Well, I don't know where they got that information.
Because when we got that broom back in the middle of May, it didn't do the work. They sent us new bristles, we put them on, it still didn't do the work. So why are we spending $5,200 on something that doesn't do the job?
Okay, thank you.
Chris Trombley, 38, Town Hill Road, County of Champlain. Champlain Fire Chief. Sorry, we haven't had a chance to come here very often, but Monday night is our night to work out, so to speak. I'll be very brief. Couple of issues is, just to bring up the speed, the fire department, everything's going very well with the district. That's probably why we're not here as much, but we're starting a youth firefighter EMS program, if you will, for residents in the fire district, which includes Village of Champlain, for members 16 years old and older, once they become eighteen, if they can join us if I remember. That's a good way to promote youth, to promote youth services. That being said, we've asked ISO, which is Insurance Services Office, to come in and do an audit of our fire district, which again includes Village of Champlain. Currently, right now, we're rated in five in the village through the water system, which is good. One being the best, ten being the worst, and in the town, we're rated in nine. We've had some changes in apartments in the last few years with the addition of a 2,000-gallon minute truck, things of that nature, and also some improvements within the village, so we've got some coming to do an audit. Chris Trombley, you could pass that around. What I'm really here to ask is a little support from, actually, none of the trustees, so you're off topic with me, but probably from Woody. And in fact, he's helped us in beforehand, Bob, and it's been like, you'll see on the second page of this document, and I'm sorry, I only have enough for the trustees and Woody, but on the second page of this document, there's a part for the water department to fill out. They look for a scaled map of the water system, which I know we have, rate of actual flows, water consumption over the last four months. Just things that I, I'm sure I could find out, but I'm sure Woody could find out within a matter of weeks or a few short weeks, if we could. So Woody is an active member of the department, and also working here. It's quite busy, but I would appreciate the support if we can. I also have a team that's going to help us with the other stuff, like fire department, facts and figures and things of that nature. Once we compile all this information, we send it to ISO, they come back, and we actually sit down with them for two or three days, go over training records, we'll hit some hydrants, we'll come up here and talk to Woody. It's quite an in-depth scenario, I mean, it's something that we really want to be done, so. So I'm looking for some assistance on this, and at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is lower everybody's ISO rating, which will thereby lower your insurance rating and your personal insurance. I will, so. Will it work? I hope so. Village Rosas Point is not in the district. They're rated at four or five, I believe, they have one of the best ratings around, again, because they just added a water tank. So I hope this endeavor will be well worth it. And I think it's going to, I hope it's going to change our rating in the town, and I hope it changes in the village too, but we don't look at our district as a town or a village, we kind of look at it as one, like the area, so. That's all I have, and hopefully folks have any questions for myself, or...
Any questions for Chris?
Also, if I can add, Mr. Mayor too, is Mr. Tatro is a Village of Champlain co-enforcement officer, as well as Village Rosas Point and Town of Champlain co-enforcement officer. We're working on this week to provide him with a pager, just so we can track him down, so to speak. So once that project's complete, we'll provide this board, or at least Woody, or whoever uses him, also with the pager number for the fire departments, they're providing with pagers, so you can contact a little bit of shared services flavor.
Cool.
What do you think?
Does he like that idea?
He was, yeah, he likes the idea now. But we've had a lot of serious fires in the fire district, and not so much in the village, but in the town, where we've had to contact them, and most recently in Rosas Point, we had a fire at the Old Holland, as you know, and we needed everybody for that one, so that was a really good endeavor, but things like that, it's nice to have a co-enforcement officer helping. So I assume, I'm not going to save your whole meeting because you're waiting for me, but I assume that we'll have some support in this, and somebody else, or Woody, or somebody or yourself, will contact me as to whether we can complete this project for ISO. Thanks.
I'm here to give you all the assistance we can, and just to take this opportunity to thank you. I know, I don't think of the fire department very often, but the fire at the Holland showed that, you know, what a good fire department we have in the area, and all work together, and we appreciate it, so you can go with your heist.
Sure will.
Thanks.
And the safety too, emergency services, there's a lot of resistance. We will start that up, but I'll tell you what, giving three or four calls today, it's quick, it's really good, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
And not only do they help the fires, but they stepped up for St. Mary's Bazaar and ran our barbecue this year, and it was wicked good.
That's true. That is not a rumor. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Woody.
Okay, Celine, give us an update from the county?
Yeah, a couple things. I don't know if you receive your county directories or if you need extra ones. Did all of the trustees get one?
No, we only get like two.
Oh, well, I brought you some more, okay. Also, for the last two, three years, I've been attending meetings on the Northern Tier Expressway, which is, was known as the Rooftop Highway. All meetings are in Canton. Congressman McHugh gave a grant some years ago, and they have been doing sculpting sessions ever since. So we get a lot of these things. So I brought you a copy. But nothing has been decided, but I think at our next meeting, they're going to start looking at where they can start making some adjustments to Route 11. And I've been working closely with George Rivers in Rosas Point, because of course, Steve's mostly interested in that it connects with the bridge. And you know, we always fight this at all our meetings, they always think of Plattsburg, because of the ferry, the airport, railroad, everything's in Plattsburg. So we have a bridge here, so. And they do mention that coming all the way up here. So it would affect us, certainly Route 11 someday when they do do something, so we should really keep aggressive what they're going to do. It'll involve me many years, I don't know if it'll be in my lifetime, but at least they're working on it, so. Thanks for your board. I'm chairing the Buildings and Grounds, I might give you an update on our major projects. Our jail, our $23 million jail, is 99.9 complete. That's the good news. The bad news is, it's full. Not only that, but we had to board some prisoners out a short time ago. So that's a very sad commentary on what's happening in Flint County. But we have over 200 beds, where some of those are federal prisoners, but when there are no federal prisoners there, or fewer than the 40 that are allotted, we fill them with county prisoners, so that's not good. Our airport terminal, maybe some of you have seen it from Route 22, it's really moving, it's wonderful, it's about half completed. We hope that it'll be completed maybe January, February. And relocation in 2007. We have to sell the Hangers and the other old airport before we can open this one, but it's moving very nicely, and we'll defer to some very good news job-wise shortly. We have the Development Corporation and the Chamber marketing for us, and they've done a very good job. So I think you're going to hear some good news in the future, so that continues. The other project we had was the Human Services Building. That's where Social Services is located, and some of our nurses. The Old Montgomery Ward's building, there are no windows, there's no air, people have complained for many, many years. Well, we finally put air conditioning in, and we are adding to that building, and things are happening, and people are much happier, because we have a lot of employees there, and the air was not very good. We have a county auction of foreclosed property on June 21st at 11 o'clock, to put in community. There are two parcels in Town of Champlain. I'm not sure where they are. Our sales tax is good, above projection, before spending, which is good for us as municipalities, I guess. The other thing we discussed recently at our finance meeting was removing the county sales tax, because the state has removed it. The county sales tax on gasoline was $3 a gallon. So that will be probably voted on this week when we meet, so we just talked about it. Are there any questions you have?
This is a county tax on gas, I'm assuming.
Well, it's part of our 340 percent.
I went to a DOT breakfast a while back, and I thought it was interesting that the Rooftop Highway wasn't on the 10-year plan, but of course, Mr. Trombley from Ellenberg made sure that, he brought that up, and brought it to light, because I think he's a big proponent of insurance.
Oh, it affects his area, right, to Ellenberg?
That'd be a great thing.
Well, some communities don't want to be bypassed, do you?
Right.
That's another issue. They're going to have to decide which ones. Some will probably have the road widened, some will bypass, and others will go. So I don't know, but you certainly will be involved in the process.
Thanks, Celine. Okay, we'll be home, report from Mike, he's not here tonight. At this point, we have to briefly stop the meeting and move to the public hearing on Local Law 2, which is the revocation of the village police department. So at this time, we are open to public comment on local village law 2. Ken?
Yeah, I'll move the camera down here, sit next to... In any event, I have a comment on the local law. I know that a lot goes into changing local law in something of the magnitude of a police force, and more than likely, you folks have thoroughly researched it, looked at it, you've already got your decisions made, because that's why we're at that point. If it's based on economic reasons, or insurance reasons, or who knows what. So I don't know all of the factors that you all have decided to bring it up for termination, but I think about it at least from the perspective of creating a new police force should the village ever need it. It'll require a lot of work, and kind of from that perspective, I'd almost rather see it just sit there, going on the books, as it has been for a number of years. I don't think it's hurting anyway. But I don't know that, there may be economic issues and whatnot. So it's only from that perspective that is going to be a cost to resurrect one, should we be one, a need for one, to actively be in the village again, that I would say I oppose it, but I don't have all the facts that you folks have, so I just want to throw my two cents in. Then you got 'em.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Actually, there is a cost involved with not having a police department. If you have one on the books, you have to do reports. I'm not sure exactly how frequently they are, but Ross's Point have graciously done them for us in the past few years, but, uh, they're having issues there also. And, uh, we would have to do police reports ourselves. We don't really have anybody to do that. We can always create a new department if the need ever presented itself, but the size of our village, we can, we just cannot afford to have a police officer or police officers. So there is a cost if we don't, don't disband the police department officially.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, have you got one comment on that? Ken? And I know I'm new around here, but this is my, this is my perspective on it. Um, I know that it's expensive to have a police force, but from what I'm seeing, there's hardly any response time for the, for the police force that we do have. I mean, this is like my situation. You call them, they might show up. And the only thing I see is the local state trooper sitting here the third Tuesday of every month getting his quota. And I hate to be glib about it, but that's basically it. So there is a need for some type of law enforcement in this area that I see, I don't think is being met. So if we, I mean, we have, I understand it's expensive, but plus the, plus the, plus the other side of the coin. I mean, you know, we've got people driving drunk almost nightly from the flood zone, yet we have no one around to enforce law. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, we, we do have the state police. You know, I, I understand, I, I can't answer, or stick to your question of how long their response times or what they are. I really don't know. Uh, but it is, it's not just a little bit expensive to have a police department. It's a lot expensive.
Right, and I understand that.
Just the training alone, it, it would have a very adverse impact on budget. I think if people understood how much it costs, there would be very few people who would be interested in doing this. Not many people would be willing to pay an extra hundred dollars in their taxes every year to cover a police department, so. And, uh, Ross's Point with this, has a much larger budget than we do, and they've had to cut that. But it's, it's expensive in that you have to buy vehicles, you have to do training, you have to pay people, you have to buy uniforms. Uh, it's quite costly. And like a lot of things in government now, we have to look at consolidating services and using what we have. And that's what we're trying to do here. We haven't had a police department here in quite a few years. It's not, we haven't been able to afford it, I guess, for quite a few years. So, um, as much as we would like to, we just can't afford it.
Just a comment on, um, I was just wondering, is there any way, because of the issue that he's having down at Cedar Street, that you alert the state police that you might want to monitor that area on certain nights and that type of thing? I mean, so that way.
Yeah, that we can do. We can call them up and say that we are having problems.
What about, what about a nice letter to the, to the owner of the flood zone saying, "This is a concern in our town. This needs to be addressed." I think, you know, and I, I understand that there's nothing that you guys can do right now to say, "Okay, we can't have this in the town anymore." I mean, there's, there's, there's protocol to follow. And everybody needs to have a voice, but I think that at least having a letter from the mayor or the village saying, "We've had complaints about this. This is a concern." I think that may go a long way to, you know, to give the guy a wake-up call because right now, he's very impotent.
Oh, we're more than willing to do that, but, like I said, I've heard this from more than one person recently. So we, we can do that and we will do that.
Thank you.
Is there any more comment on the disbanding of the police department? Okay, Woody, you don't do any further rule on this to me at this point, or?
Um, yeah.
Yes. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to disband the police department at Village of Champlain. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? Now we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Let's have a. Number one, my report, uh, I don't know about anyone else, but there's been, uh, been a fair amount of interest in the school. I noticed that from the minutes of the last shared services meeting, uh, they were suggesting that we might do a survey or, uh, have a, a study done through Plattsburgh State. So I think that would be our next step, would we maybe want to send out questionnaires or something to engage the, you know, public interest in the, uh, in the school. And if, if that proves worthy, we would probably go ahead and schedule a public hearing sometime in the fall to see if anybody has any comments on that. Not sure exactly how we would solicit public comment. I don't know, maybe something that we would have to send a mailing out for, or some such thing. But I have heard a lot of positive things about people thinking we should try to come up with something. And that may be something we would look at with, with the town and also see if they have an interest. It's a, it's a very good piece of property as far as for a village. It has an underground, ball, ball field and a serviceable building, so. I think that would be our next step there. We got a report from, uh, D.C. Inspector Camaro Van. She gave us some improvements that we probably want to proceed with. Uh, and good news, the, uh, they're gonna be installing a water heater as the border finally. So whatever brought that about, good. We've been waiting for that for some time. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions on those items? Oh, just one other comment I'd like to make. I want to commend the Shared Services Committee for the work that they've done so far. I think it's very promising that we're having the Village of Ross's Point, Town of Champlain, the Village of Champlain, at least looking into some of the mutual interests that they have and some ways that we might save money by pooling our resources. I think it's a very worthwhile endeavor. Sure, thanks. Are there any questions on the report? Okay, if not, we'll proceed with the reports of the trustees. Uh, Trustee Chombley?
Uh, the street committee met a week or so ago and we came up with a proposed plan for 2006, uh, which will be covered under new business at the end. Um, and Woody, Steve and I are gonna meet again to come up with a plan for 2007, um, depending on what we get for CHIPS money and, uh, have a plan for next year and the year after, so.
Good. I know all the residents are working forward to that.
It took a while, but we've got it.
Okay. So you're prepared to bring up a motion under new business?
Yes.
And can I make one comment on your report? The, uh, when you're talking about doing a survey, um, for the interest of the school, possibly that's something that we could do to go out with our Water Sewer Bill? That could be attached with that maybe, say, open postage maybe and do a home shop.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Staple to the village's nation.
Are there any questions for Kim? No, Trustee Martin?
Uh, so much. Attended the shared services meeting on the first of July with, uh, Trustee Southwood. I was kinda hoping that Mr. Tatro would be here tonight with some good news about this grant that we've been waiting for seemingly forever, but we'll come through with it. Topics of discussion were some water, combination of resources, and dealing with water prices. Economic development grant on the West Service Road, water and sewage services to the businesses that are open. There's quite a bit of development going on. Quite a bit of land has been sold and, and open for development, but hopefully we will, we will be involved with the water and sewage aspect of that development. And that's about all I have.
Any questions from Trustee Martin on the report? Now we'll proceed with the, uh, report of Trustee Southwood.
Kim and Greg pretty much covered everything that I was gonna mention. I'll just add a few things if that's okay. The streets thing, I'm looking forward to that. Working with Kim, we did bang heads a little bit, but we got it figured out. The Shared Services Committee, I appreciate you mentioning that as well, Mr. Mayor, but it's, uh, it's something we have to do. It's nice to see everybody there that's involved. There's been a lot of good input. It's kind of a wish list right now, but if we don't look at everything, we're not gonna figure out what we'll work and what we'll. As far as the school goes, uh, I've got some feedback from the fire district that, that they may be interested in, uh, the school as well. They're, uh, outgrowing the size of their current facility and they've done some preliminary investigation of the school for their own offices and potential new space. So I see that as a really good opportunity to, to share the, the expense of moving forward with a project like that. Putting the water in Sewerville attachment is a great idea, but you know what? We've got going on right here tonight with Ken's helping us. Hopefully we'll generate people to call the office and express their ideas about whether we should move forward with that. Finally, we received a packet in the mail from Bernier and Carr regarding a preliminary plan for the water system upgrade. And it's pretty lengthy. I'm not sure how much Woody has had a chance to dive into it, but, uh, I looked at it quite extensively and I'll look at it again. There's a lot of questions that I have about recommendations to try to help with the quality of the water and, and also with the pressure issues that people are concerned with. The, one more thing is that if we can just get that grant money, it would be huge. I know it's something that is, uh, out of our grasp right now, but if we get that, then we really move forward with this project.
Any questions for Trustee Southwood? Now we'll proceed with the report. Trustee Gary?
Uh, just a couple things. The boat launch is coming to an end. I don't know if anyone's been down River Street, but the trees are planted. It's, uh, starting to come together. Uh, parts of the benches are in. Have the other part come in yet? All the parts are in. Um, we picked up picnic tables and we've got the grills. And our final stage, we have to have an overall audit to make sure that we have done everything appropriately. All the money has been expended appropriately, that we have crossed every T and dotted every I. And that has to be completed by the end of June. So we're hoping that we're going to be on target for that. Um, if not, we would get an extension just for the audit, but everything else seems to be complete. Uh, the Beautification Society was not able to meet this, um, past few weeks due to the bazaar and I'm not available. Uh, so we'll get back on track with that, uh, this week or next. Uh, and we would be happy to come up with a survey or something to present because they want to take that bull by the horn and start really pursuing the school issues. So we will, uh, take a look at that. If you're all willing to have us do that, we would be happy to do it. Uh, the flower boxes all over the town have been planted. Joanne Favreau did that for us. They look very, very beautiful. So if you see her, please compliment her on the work done. Um, and also, just to touch on the issue, the ash lines did come to me and I did do some research on it as well. This was brought up three years ago when I was first on the board. And it wasn't put into the minutes, but after talking with people, and the discussion had come up that if there were other coaches available, that, um, she would not coach at that time. But nothing was put in writing to state that fact. We got, there's a copy of the letter, uh, her responding to the petition and everything and, um, but I think what we need to keep in, in mind here is the kids are losing out on playing because there's an issue. And that's what it's focused. It is all about the kids. So I just wanted to mention that so that we, you know, do address that issue and not let it get brushed under the carpet. And that is it for me. If there's any questions?
Any, uh, questions for Trustee Gary on the report?
Thanks to the, like.
I'm sorry?
What makes the kids play all the night?
Oh, probably every night, because we all have different levels.
So if somebody like that's wanting to go down and observe?
Yes, and it's all over the place. It depends on where they're playing.
Sure we could schedule?
A lot of times, yeah. I have the schedule.
You do?
I have the boys' schedule, but I can get the schedule, yeah.
The county has to have it. I have a question. Is, is there something that we can do about this tonight?
I have no idea.
Was there any mention of the waiver process in the prior?
Before at our meeting, we discussed it and Scott Short had a conversation with her and at that point she agreed and she didn't coach. But it wasn't stated in the minutes, but in recollecting everything that happened, um, it was a conversation that it is kind of a conflict and if there is someone else available, then let's have other people coach. Um, and, you know, we appreciate the fact that she does step up when there isn't anybody. I mean, because otherwise our kids lose out yet again. But they do have, uh, two people that are assisting at the moment on that team as well. So I don't know. I don't know whether it would behoove if I, you spoke to Tammy though already. And, you know, if you wanted me to call her and see if she was willing to do something, I don't know.
Well, I don't think we're ever resolved with that right now, so.
Do, um, the tape from the meeting make it available?
Oh, that's an idea. Good thinking.
Okay, are there any further questions for Trustee Gary?
Yeah, I just have one more. I, I respectfully submit that I don't want this to wait a month before it's decided upon. And why can't we come up with a decision based on what we find? If we find in that tape that she's not supposed to be coaching, if there's other people available, then she shouldn't have to coach. That's the bottom line. And I think we can, we can, I'm recommending that we can do that as a board right now and not wait a month before it comes back.
Well, the one thing I would say is, I don't know, maybe Celine could help us out on that, but isn't there a county youth commission? Isn't that run through the county?
There's a youth board, yeah.
I'm sure they must have some sort of policies on these things or whatever.
I was, I was town youth commissioner for quite a while and the waiver process is supposed to be used to allow a kid access to a team that may not be available within that township. That's the strictest definition of the waiver process. If there is no team, team in wars, then you're supposed to sign a waiver and let that kid go and play.
I guess I'm very unclear as to whether there's the proper venue to bring this up at. I had, I did try to find out. I did call around and I, I wasn't able to get clear answers from anyone that I talked to. But I'm not sure this is the venue. I mean, I don't think we should do anything until we find out how this is supposed to be handled.
But I think what he's asking is can we address it without having to wait till the next meeting? Because. next meeting, because they're over right in the middle of July. You know, so then this child will lose out on the season. And as a parent, I totally understand that if you're feeling uncomfortable, you don't want to put your child in a situation that is an uncomfortable situation.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying maybe is I'm unclear as to what our role is here. I don't, I don't think it's something that we make motions on or something like that. I'm not sure. I just don't know. And I would more welcome anybody, like Steve said, who has some experience in this, than to look into it and find out what we need to do at this point. But I don't know. I think we should move on from that. I mean, it's spending a lot of time on this, and we don't know what we should do, so... Okay, now we'll move on to the report for clerk treasurer.
Correspondence and extensions. Reports have been copied for the board from May.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the warrant.
So moved.
Second?
Do you want to do the purchase request first? Okay, I have one to add to the warrant. Out of A seventy-one ten point four, which is the boat launch. The bill is for the park benches and park grills in the amount of two thousand ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, wouldn't that go on to point two for equipment, because it's not disposable? We're not throwing them away.
The boat launch grant is all under...
Oh, okay.
Two thousand ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, are there any questions on the warrant?
I have one. How was the Fred Pryor class, Doc? Okay.
Well, actually, we're looking at the questions on the warrant.
Oh, I thought that was... Okay, sorry.
I knew this grant rating was a... Is this a PP? She doesn't drive yet?
She goes this Thursday and Friday.
Does someone work with her?
I couldn't go because my son graduates, and my parents have their 50th wedding anniversary Friday. I wanted to.
I'll shoot for my next question.
Yep, I'll get with it right away after.
Okay, are there any other questions on the warrant? If not, we proceed to a vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. And I have four purchase requisitions. I still deal with them separately. First one is for weed whacker at one hundred and eighty-five dollars. entertain a motion to pay purchase requisition?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, it's just under the wrong account number. Again, it should be point two, not point four.
And there's some price changes on this.
I was gonna say, that's a lot better pricing than what I could give.
Okay, well...
There's two different weed whackers. I had confirmed pricing given to me this morning by Terry. He picked it up over the weekend. The commercial trimmer is two fifteen twenty. It has a list price of two hundred and seventy. And then a heavier, lesser duty is a hundred fifty-nine twenty, has a list price of one ninety-nine. For what we're using weed whacker for, the homeowner models just don't last. They last two years and you throw them away. So the price will change from, for the commercial to two fifteen twenty, or a lesser grade model of one fifty-nine twenty. They both have the lifetime guarantee on the shaft, shaft drive, and they're straight shafts.
Kim, you want to change your motion?
Uh, well, yeah, I'll make a motion for the more heavy-duty weed whacker at two fifteen.
Okay, any discussion?
Comes with safety glasses right there. I'm watching. Just standing in the ditch.
Okay, ready to vote then? Public comment session is over. Okay. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Uh, second purchase order we have is for twelve five-eighths inch water meters and one meter reading gun. Meters at a price of ninety-one ninety-one each for a total of one thousand one hundred and two ninety-two, and then one meter reading gun at a cost of three seventy-fourth twelve. Have a motion to pay this purchase rec?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Twelve could be curious of whether?
You should.
No further discussion. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Third purchase order is bags for sludge at three hundred and nineteen per thousand. And what's, what's here? Bags for sludge free. What's this Mansfield bag?
That's the, that's the vendor.
Okay, so how come there's a three nineteen for thousand, and what's the two eighty-six?
Free.
Two hundred and eighty-six dollars for free. Okay, uh, for a total of three thousand four hundred seventy-six sixty-two. Do we have a motion to pay this purchase rec?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How long will these bags, ten thousand, last?
A little over a year.
Have to decide if this, this quantity...
Price breaks, and that's what we purchased in the past.
Are there any further discussion? Now proceed to vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Fourth item is two twelve by sixteen point five tires for the backhoe at a cost of one hundred thirty-nine dollars each, a total of two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Do we have a motion to pay this requisition?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Now proceed to vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Takes care of the purchase requisition. Okay, now I have the report of the superintendent.
We all have copies of my report. We had our water inspection and sewer inspection. We had a few surprises on both. Some things we were planning on upgrading in the water. It was planned in this budget here. Some things we're dealing with the fence up at the tank wasn't high enough. We can, we'll work towards that. The sewer inspection was the second one in less than six months. Caught us with unawares. And they've also noted some things that have been overlooked in the past that we have to address in the, in the future. I'd like to get together with the two trustees involved with the equipment soon. Uh, Bernier and Carr, as trustee Southwood mentioned. They want to set up a meeting either the, on June twentieth or the twenty-second at five P.M. here for Mr. Martin and Mr. Southwood. And as the mayor said, GSA is ordering the meter. They're ordering the meters through us, and they're paying for it. But we, they've committed to putting a meter in with a digital readout display above ground. And the other thing is, I don't know if you want to bring it up on our new business, the nineteen ninety-three truck. We had an off report there a month or so ago.
Yeah, just a reminder, what you can add these things to the agenda, like ideally, something to know about ahead of time is to put it on there. Donna sends these out a week ahead of time so that everybody can...
Just remember.
Okay. All right, ready? That's your report, what? All right, questions on superintendent's report? Now we'll move on to correspondence.
We have correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding the two thousand six annual water system inspection report. Correspondence from American Agent seven sixty-seven relative to the liquor license renewal. Letter to the Living Water Baptist Church regarding their water and sewer, or their sewer connection to the village system. Correspondence from Earth Science Engineering regarding Horizon Heights subdivision. Letter to Teensters Local six eighty-seven recognizing them as a negotiating unit for the DPW crew. Correspondence from James and Fay regarding Prospect Street. Correspondence from Michael Garen requesting a culvert on Willow Street. Correspondence from Debbie Levantra asking for a letter of appreciation for the Sisters and St. Mary's Academy. Correspondence from Clinton County Health Department regarding sanitary survey of Champlain Village Water System. Letter to Jane Tatcher regarding damaged sidewalk. Correspondence from Tamara Venn from New York State, D.C., and copy of annual sewer inspection report.
Thank you, Juanita. Okay, we'll move on to whole business. The GSA meter issue we've already discussed. The Time Warner Cable franchise is pending. Something I did just recently read about that, though, is that there's some legislation pending that may decrease the amount of money that's derived from a franchise such as this in the municipality, so I'll have to keep an eye on that. We all have a, we weren't able to get to last week. We had a letter from Vic Fallic asking for a one-time dispensation on his sewer credit for a leak he had while he was on vacation down in Florida. Fifty-seven thousand gallons sewer credit, which should mount to two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-one cents. This would be his one-time. Okay, so at this time, I entertain a motion to give Vic a two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-one sewer credit?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now we proceed to vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Does anyone have any other old business, or any old business? Okay, if not, we proceed to new business. We have to decide what to do with our Sharp copier. We had purchased that originally. It's, now that we have a lease on the new copier, we have to decide what to do with the old copier. I think Donna had some ideas. Do you have any ideas to do?
Well, we looked at the eBay issue a little while ago, and a similar copier's had a couple, and they were like three or four hundred dollars. They weren't. The bidding wasn't that high on them that I could see. And the other thing would be to advertise it in the paper as surplus property. We wanted to do that.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion to advertise this in the paper as surplus property?
Motion to advertise that equipment as surplus property.
Okay.
Sure.
Second, any discussion? Okay, if not, proceed to vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Now, on the part of a, which best, the street committee make recommendations for two thousand six paving and repair?
Okay, Woody, do the other trustees have a copy of this? What you gave Steve and I that we...
Everybody received the copy.
Okay. Paving proposals, Spruce Street. We came up with the decision to go with option two, which is resurfacing, cutting down the shoulders, widening the road, and doing a shim coat, three-inch binder application. According to Woody, it will last ten years and at a cost of...
In theory.
In theory. At a cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. And on Prospect Street, we are going to go with option number three, which is roadwork to be done at the top of Prospect Street, up near the cemetery, where the road is really bad on both sides. There's significant drop-offs on both sides, at a cost of twelve thousand five hundred and six dollars. That will leave us with six thousand twelve dollars left over from our CHIPS money, and with that remaining money, Woody will start doing some drainage work on the bottom of Prospect Street. The go-forward plan for next year, hopefully, will be to do significant work on the rest of Prospect Street. That is our proposal.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we do the work at nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars on Spruce Street and twelve thousand five hundred and six dollars on Prospect Street, with the remaining six thousand dollars to be done for drainage work on the bottom of Prospect.
Do we have a second on that? Second. Is there any discussion? Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Great, and we will have a go-forward plan that we can present sometime during the coming year to where everyone will go?
I spoke with Woody about that, and we'd like to have a proposal for our next board reading.
Okay, very good. And at this time, I'd like to put on a resolution to congratulate St. Mary's Academy on their hundredth year anniversary. Could you read that?
Resolution of congratulations and appreciation to St. Mary's Academy on a hundred years of Catholic education in the northern tier offered by Mayor Jeff Jeffrey K. Moore. Whereas in nineteen oh six, the daughters of charity of the Sacred Heart of Jesus accepted an invitation from Reverend Francois Xavier Shagnon to reopen the Throphy Field School in Champlain to educate the young people and instill deep spiritual beliefs to assist them throughout their adult life. And whereas although many hardships were endured, Sisters laid the foundation of St. Mary's Academy, a school which to this day teaches our young people the value of family, community, and hard work. St. Mary's Academy also teaches that offering a helping hand is a way of life that one can be extremely proud of, and that making sound choices has positive rewards. And whereas hundreds of residents of Champlain and the surrounding communities can proudly proclaim their affiliation with the academy. Many changes have taken place in the field of education, and students of St. Mary's are engaged in the most current and up-to-date methods of learning, being taught by caring professionals who can take great pride in this endeavor. Whereas St. Mary's Academy has been a successful institution because of the tremendous outpour of support from the alumni, faculty, and parents, who know the value of learning the spiritual as well as academic fundamentals, which are equally important in attaining one's goal and experiencing a happy and rewarding life. Then be it further resolved that we express our sincere appreciation for the positive impact the academy has had on the lives of those who had the good fortune of attending this now celebrated school.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to present this to St. Mary's. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. I just have it. Uh, the last item we have, or that I have, is a what to do with the nineteen ninety-three truck. We had surplus this once. We put it out for bits to not get a sufficient bid. We had surplus this once, we put it out for bids, did not get a sufficient bid. I guess at this time there's an offer. Do we want to rebid this or do we want to entertain that offer? Or is something else?
Forty-five hundred. Four thousand five hundred.
You, uh, is your recommendation, wait?
We, we're not using the truck at all. I don't know if we're going to get much more for it, keep advertising for it, passing the name around, going to the county superintendent's meeting.
The only thing that I'm concerned about is that it's a heavier truck than the ninety-two that we have, right?
No, they're about the same.
We don't have a ninety-two.
Ninety-two. You thought about the eighty-nine?
No.
Two thousand.
Okay. Excuse me, the newest one. It's a heavier truck than the newest one.
But it's not, it's really not plumbed properly for plowing and indoor sanding. Want to table it? So I can sit down and talk with the equipment committee?
Does anybody have, want to make a motion to do anything with this or do we want to table it?
Why don't we make a motion to open up bids one more time and see if any, get any light systems?
Do we make the motion right effect? Open up bid one more time?
Make a motion that we put it up for bid one more time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, all in favor of putting the nineteen ninety-three truck out for bid again, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it? Anyone else have any other business? Now we'd have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.